To discuss the possible 2020 local option sales tax projects. And Andrew, do you want to kick us off and just kind of give expectations and kind of the format for tonight's discussion?
Yeah, you bet. Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. As you all recall, a few months ago, we had a retreat and we talked about potential sales tax requests and we split up into five different work groups. And over the last few months, I know all five groups have been working hard and have met several times. And so scheduling this session this evening to just kind of check in and see how things are going. One of the things that I would like to do this evening is get feedback from the council. I don't believe any decisions need to be made tonight, but I want to know if the groups are on the right track. So get feedback from the council if the groups are looking at these things the right way, are including the right things in their projects, or if they're just totally off-base and we should stop wasting our time on some of this stuff. So really looking to see how things are going. The other thing that we should get some level of feedback on is dollar amounts. I know we talked about at our last session, coming in with maybe some variables or different ranges, one that's all-in Cadillac plan and one that maybe could be scaled back. There's been some level of those discussions, so giving some thoughtfulness to that would be helpful as well. The format that we anticipated this evening was to do a five-minute presentation on each of the projects, followed by five minutes of discussion, taking them one at a time. There's been a council member that's been assigned for each group and will be presenting, so it's fun to hear from the council rather than staff this time. Then really giving the direction for the groups to go back and meet again over the next several weeks. It's likely we're going to want to check in again in about a month or two as we lead up to that kickoff of the legislative session in February, but thought this was an appropriate time to check in and look forward to hearing feedback from all the council and hearing the presentations from the groups.
Thanks, Bill. All right. Thanks, Andrew. So with that, we'll get started. And fire station renewal, is that?
Here we are. Yeah.
All right.
All right.
It's all you.
Okay. Well, the Public Safety Work Group, which was comprised of Ryan, Kyle Berger, and Anthony Hickson, myself, have been asked to look for approval to proceed with the renewal and remodel of the Fergus Falls Fire Station. The current building was constructed in 1976 and since then has had no updates aside from overhead doors in the apparatus bay and maybe some tune-ups of the HVAC system that happened in the 80s. The remodel would allow for significant updates to the infrastructure and bring it up-to-date with energy efficiency, since there is little to no insulation with the concrete walls and flooring. Currently, the electric and heating costs are around a $2,000 bill combined, and we would be looking at a lot of long-term savings in utility costs. There would also be substantial upgrades to the living quarters, which would include ADA requirements, as well as updates to the educational instruction areas. The station holds roughly 61 meetings and training sessions annually for the city staff and department alone. They also hold 15 to 20 basic firefighter classes as a host site for M-State, up to three League of Minnesota City Specialty Training venue sessions, and a National Fire Academy course each year. With their proposed improvements and updates, the department could host mutual aid partner trainings, trainings for public works staff, and be a regional host for Basic Fire Skills Day using the new built-in training props and areas. Also included in the project would be the acquisition of the new aerial rescue truck. The current ladder truck was manufactured in 1995. It is the only one in a 45-mile radius and it serves a regional, as a reason, regional resource for specialized rescues. The new training props and areas that would be built in to the remodel would purposely be constructed to help enhance safe truck use and improve incident procedures for all of those who need the department's assistance, since they act as the center for emergency operations to the surrounding communities. They do serve, what is it, 144 square miles, which includes the city of Fergus Falls and four townships. And they do also serve approximately 13 miles of the highly-traveled I-94 corridor. They estimate that this project would be about a $4.5 million ask with everything included. I wish that could have happened prior to, but tomorrow there is actually an architect coming to do a little walkthrough to kind of do some feasibility of project options as far as even adding a second story to the east side of the building opposite the apparatus bay, or possibly demoing that whole east side and starting from scratch, which would be more financially efficient. The truck bay would remain the same, but that would be where a lot of those built-in props and training areas would be. Aside from that, if there's anything else Ryan wants to add at the moment, there was a sheet that came in your packet that had a lot of the specifics and details.
Chief, do you have anything to add?
No.
Krista covered it pretty well, I thought. Any questions, discussion, thoughts?
You said four and a half million dollar project cost. Do you have a breakdown with that lead compared to ladder truck compared to station renovation?
Well, the ladder truck, I believe right now is estimated at 1.7 million. So an above that would be infrastructure, energy efficiencies, things like that, so.
And does it, you talked about possibly adding some square footage. Does this include definitely adding, or just looking at the possibility of like re-
It would definitely add, is what-
Our hopes is that's what the architect coming in tomorrow will kind of give us some ideas on what that could look like.
Sure.
Rather than just, in a sense, taking what we have and renewing it is actually making some more functionality within it.
And one of the challenges for all the projects, most of the projects, I think is going to be coming up with hard numbers without a commitment that you're going forward, but having enough information to take to the legislature, so yeah, I mean, that's a challenge, I guess. But do you feel like you'll be able to get good numbers before January if this is a project that you take to the legislature?
Absolutely, because there was, you had kind of just a basic breakdown of things, including the truck too, so I think that'd be something that's very doable.
And where some of those numbers come from is, Councilmember Krista Hagberg found a Monticello, recently built an entire new station, and that was just under $4 million for at bay, living quarters, two stories, and that was from the ground up. So even if we are only looking at the state of the office and living quarter side and not doing full-new at bay, that's where we're thinking that we certainly should be coming in well under $3 million, somewhere near that next building, leaving additional funds for the rescue area.
Great. All right. We can move on to the next presentation, and then you can always come back to if you have a question. I will call on Councilmember Caroline Gustafson to do her Trails presentation.
Oh, great. Okay. The Trails group got together probably three or four times to just discuss a few different options that Ryan Miller has kind of been working on. So the, in your packet, there are five different options, and they're basically in order of what we think the importance of them would be. So the first trail segment is the Dairy Trail segment. There is a grant in right now that, Ryan, it'll be November, mid-November, before you hear back from them on that. If it's not funded by GMRPTC, I guess I said that right? It's just looking at the dairy site using the on-road bicycle facilities from Union Alway to the Otter Tail County Historical Society. And just making that trail, there's a total cost estimate on that, which includes some of the inflation from other numbers that we've gotten. The second segment is the South River Rocks, River Rock segment, which is the downtown area across from what the downtown riverfront is looking at and just widening that to allow more usage. The third segment is connecting the Central Lakes Trail to downtown, so it's the Glacial Edge Trail South segment. It's looking at making some of that on-road, updating some of that sidewalk trail space that's on Pebble Lake Road, and just making that the multi-use corridor connecting the Central Lakes Trail to downtown Fergus Falls. The other thing we were talking about, Eric and Tonason, was in our group as well as Clara and Steve, mountain bike and cross-country trails. As you know, we put in a grant to hopefully purchase a trail groomer, and then using that and updating some cross-country trails in town, as well as the Fever Park Mountain Bike Trails, and getting some more mileage out of those trails. And the last one that we put in there is thinking about trail systems beyond pavement and rock and trail, and looking at the actual river itself, and trying to find a solution to that Union Avenue sewer pipe so that we could use the waterway. Anything else, Ben?
Did, I just add that the, so we don't, I think the estimated cost, Brian, correct me, but it's close to $2 million on that sewer pipe, but we don't feel like that's probably realistic to get $2 million. But we do think that providing a matching fund so that we can go after funds from LCC Mar or some different state DNR waterway funds, or you know, just, this would provide a match for us to, you know, to go out and secure the funding to, the first step to make that a recreational path, the waterway, is to get rid of that sewer pipe. So this would allow us to try to match those funds.
Question. So the solution for the sewer pipe would be to go under?
Either lift, yeah, either lift, yeah. Either lift station up and above, or under, or you know.
Which way does it flow? No, I know that, I was more meaning the-
Sky hooks.
Yeah. There mine.
Yeah. Sorry about that, Your Honor.
Other questions for Caroline or anyone in the Trails? Yes.
Cost for each of those five segments?
So it's on this page right here. It's, so it's 596 is for the, for the central downtown dairy to Union Avenue. Glacial Edge is 443. River Rock segment on the south side. Glacial Edge Trail South segment is 814. Mountain Bike and Cross Country 200. And Union Avenue Sewer Pipe, like we mentioned, was 500,000 for the, so our proposal would be for 2.533, 553. Any other questions of the Trails group? Any other, any, Clara, Ryan, Gene, Steve, Trails group is represented here tonight. All right, we'll move on then. The Aquatics Center, Caroline and Justin, I know you're both involved, which one of you is going to? Justin, you're gonna, all right, sounds good.
So I put out in your sheet, or on your desk, another, a timeline that's more legible than the one that came in the packet, and I apologize, I don't know, some of the stuff came over fuzzy, but. So the Aquatics group has been meeting, and as the council knows, we identified two sites we originally looked at for site selection, and then we added a third site, Roosevelt. And there's some comments in your packet of information on criteria that we went through each, each site, and the final site that we as an aquatics committee has settled on is Roosevelt. And there's quite a bit of information, I won't share all of it, you can go ahead and read through it, of why we settled on Roosevelt within the information. We also did updated analysis on the baler loads and just to see, it was asked that we review the budget as far as what we're expecting for baler loads to cover costs and what we'd be looking at for subsidy from the city. And then the timeline that I shared with you, we feel that there's three kind of timelines with potentially a November election. There would be a lot to get done and prepared after the election for a spring construction season, and so there's three different schedules. That was proposed, proposed, an early timeline, a mid, and a late. And in our project cost estimates, if you recall, the last budget amount was about 6.3 million for the build. It has increased up to 7.1, and that's for a couple of reasons. One is obviously, that was two years ago when we did the first estimate. Another one was when we did the original estimate, it wasn't including parking and some of the other things that we've identified a site. It was just, the previous estimate was pretty much just the build. Didn't include parking and a lot of other amenities that are now included. So that's another increase. And the three different timelines, we have an early, mid, and a late. The early one would require us to do construction documents prior to knowing if the sales tax question went through. And so the group, you know, I don't know what the council would decide if they'd want to expense more dollars on preparing the construction documents, but that would speed up the timeline to be able to, you know, assuming the sales tax goes through, that we'd be able to start construction right away in the spring of 2021, so. You can see the design, and there's a preliminary design of how the facility would be looked at. On Roosevelt, there's two different options we looked at doing, and surprisingly, we were able to kind of put in the landscape to keep it just to the south of the skate park. Minimal tree removal would be needed. There would still be some, but that was probably the best spot for it. We talked about parking, with on-street parking and some are not having high traffic there. I think, you know, we talked about maybe reducing the parking lot. I think right now we're at about 104 stalls, so that's something that we could look at to reduce cost. So with the projected timeline, I guess, the three things that were asked is the timeline, the cost. So our, our amount right now is 7.1 million, and the timeline you have in front of you, that's legible, based on those three different milestones, if we did an early, mid, or a late progression.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Justin. Any questions? So it's 7.1, is that?
Yeah, that's, that's really hard to read, I apologize. 7.1, can't read the other number. And that's assuming on the early timeline. On the mid timeline, we would expect, because we'd have to be delayed basically a construction season more than likely, or we would get, Ryan could probably speak better to this, but if, if we don't get bids out till late spring, we might have a tough time getting good bids in. So I think we, in the, in the report, we put 2% to 3% increasing cost if it's a mid timeline, and if it's a late timeline, meaning we don't start construction documents until we know a sales tax question goes through, so we don't expense any more dollars until we've identified the revenue source for it. It might delay a whole season, and we did 5% to 7% for inflationary factors.
And you may have mentioned, I didn't catch it, so the, you know, the early, mid, and late, the early, the construction documents, what, what kind of cost is that?
Uh, I think we, correct me if I'm wrong, Caroline, I think, I think it was about 150,000 to do construction documents ahead of time, not knowing that you'd have a successful project.
Sure.
Does that sound about right, Brian?
Yeah, it was included in the phase one proposal, but I can't recall.
It was in that ballpark. I think it was 150,000, which was the pre-construction documents, design, development.
Okay. All right, thanks, Justin. Any other questions of the Aquatics project? All right, thank you. Next is the Streets and Infrastructure, and that's Jim.
I'm doing that, Michelle, Scott, and I, and Brian, and Kyle, and Matt, right? We're on, we're on that committee. What we've come up with is the Stanton, or not Stanton, Union Avenue Corridor, starting up on fur with the roundabout. And that roundabout, we figure would be city-county joint. It'd be about 1.8 million, that would be city. You'll notice we come down, down Union with the white, and then the bridge is in there. Both of those are not included in our proposal. It would, it would be in the overall proposal that they would see, and there's a reason I'll get to when, when I get to that point. Coming on down, then we come to Lake Alice Watershed, and we figure about $600,000 on Lake Alice, and that would be putting in a couple filters. On down, you've got the whole street, then you've got the bridge. And at this point, we have no idea what that bridge is going to cost, but again, it's not going to be in our proposal. We do want numbers in there, though, to show the legislature that we're doing a project that's much bigger than the money that we're asking for, and we feel that doing that will give us a better chance to get the money. We're coming on down, and we get down to Stanton. Now, on Stanton, there'll be some reconstruction of Stanton Avenue. There'll be some bumpouts, and there'll be some trees planted in there going on down. And between Lincoln and Washington, there will be considerable work done with where you're driving out from Stanton onto Union, and where you're coming in and out of, of Washington. Putting some bumpouts there. When, when you come up Stanton and you're driving out onto Union, that bridge that's there and that guardrail, it's really tough to see people coming, and you've got bicycles and everything whipping around there. Putting that bumpout out is going to give you more of a view, and it's, it's a big safety-type thing. Also, we're going to be having people go across at that area over into the riverfront development, and we need to do something in that area to make that safer than what it is now. You take your life in your hands right now if you're going to go across it. I mean, you've got cars coming and going all the time. So that is about $800,000 on the Stanton Avenue reconstruction, and about 1.1 is in the project for, for the Union Avenue safety part of it. Now, also on, on both the Stanton part, there's Minnesota State Aid and our funds involved, and you've got the same thing on the, on the bumpouts and stuff for the safety going across. We're, we're looking at 1.8 million for the roundabout, water quality at 600. Lincoln Avenue safety part of it for 1.1. Stanton Avenue street scape, you say that quick, for, for a total of 4.3 million dollars. The overall project is probably going to be somewhere between eight, eight to nine million dollars. So we figure going in with a project like this, showing them that this is the full project, but we are only asking for this amount, we figure it'd be a better chance of getting there.
Sure. Thanks, Jim. Brent?
Only question I have is with the roundabout over here up on the top, you've got these two little dead-end streets that are being put in, in there. For the residential part, I mean, they probably love that because it's going to keep the traffic out in their area, but how is that going to affect the businesses over here, Casey's and these other ones, when there's only one way to get in there? I mean, a lot of Casey's business, I mean, comes in from several different directions. Is that going to, with that particular design down on the bottom, is that going to alleviate, is that going to cut off some of their traffic and some of their business in that area? That would be in here, the only spot that I would look at and maybe have a little bit of an issue, is how that would affect those businesses in there.
Brian?
Yeah, no, that's good, you know, that, that's a very unique roundabout. Everything's in conceptual design, and there's no plans, final design, everything. We had the public house meetings with those. At this time, that's the best, based on all the concerns and from the business owners that were all in attendance and everything too. So it still needs to be vetted even more, but for the intent of a roundabout and everything, that's kind of the best we got right now.
Okay.
So, subject to change.
Sure.
But it's a difficult one.
Obviously, plenty of public.
That's just more illustrative purposes on it right now.
Good point, though, Brent. Any other questions for the roads, Andrew?
Yeah, I attended one of these meetings, and I was there, and you guys were talking about the, the infrastructure related to D-Lagoon, and as a result, the D-Lagoon group did not have the cost of the infrastructure in their proposal, so I guess my question is, have you guys went away from looking at the D-Lagoon infrastructure, or one of the groups needs to capture, I guess is what I was going to say.
This, this was the project we picked. No, we haven't, we haven't completely gone, gone away from it, but this is what we thought we could work best into the proposal.
Okay. Yeah, Justin?
Maybe I missed it, I, clearly it says 1.8 million for that roundabout on Union, 50% joint venture, so would it be 1.8 total, and we'd have half, or is-
That's, that's half, yes.
3.6 million for the roundabout.
3.6 for the roundabout. 1.8 is our cost. They're not cheap. Ouch.
Yeah.
$4 million for a roundabout.
Well, when you're going in circles, I mean, you're right.
Any other questions of the Streets, or anyone from the Streets? Have any, anything you'd like to add? Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
I guess I did have one, one question, not a question, just, so the, the pedestrian improvements, the safety improvements you talked about at Stanton and, and Union, but also from your map, it doesn't show a lot of detail, but there's a significant redevelopment of that whole block from Lincoln to Stanton.
Yes.
Or Washington even.
Yep.
Just, just enhances that corridor as, okay.
Yeah, and we, we came across, all the way across to pick up Washington because of all of that.
Sure, sure. Okay, thanks. Any others questions? All right, let's go to D-Lagoon and Park and Improvements, and I believe Councilmember Rufe is going to talk to us about that.
Hi, everyone, thank you for having me. Yeah, so this, this may be pending, this may be subject to change then, depending on that infrastructure piece, I guess. We were kind of operating under that assumption when maybe we, it, it sounds like we shouldn't have been, so we're going to have to find some common ground with the, the infrastructure group on that. But we'll, we'll cover what, we'll cover our project, and, and then we'll all work it out from there. So, yeah, myself, Andrew, Guy, and Brent met several times regarding the, the D-Lagoon project, and we, we went out for the 2000, was it 2014, D-Lagoon Master Plan, when it came to expansion and renovation of the campground, and we looked at that as, as just another, another option to get people to come to Fergus Falls, given the, but the popularity of campground, it sounds like it's pretty full every weekend in the summer, and so we would hope to expand on that. And then also, you know, work in conjunction with the Central Lakes Trail to increase usage. And then also, another aspect of the campground is that it would give an option for, for folks that are going to be coming to the large sports tournaments that we will be hosting. It'll give them another option for lodging there. So moving on to said improvements to the softball, soccer, and baseball facilities, we would propose to construct a new concession slash restroom building at the, replacing the one that's currently at the softball diamonds, that would, that would just, you know, help make it more marketable as a facility to attract more tournaments slash larger tournaments, and that building cost would be about $185,000. The, kind of the, one of the bigger changes to the complex would be building a, a soccer concession slash restroom building that would be located over centrally at the soccer complex. The association has, has come in front of the council before, you know, demonstrating the growth in their numbers, the soccer association has. And, and personally, we visited a, a soccer tournament in Detroit Lakes this summer with- concession slash restroom building that would be located over centrally, uh, at the soccer complex. The association has, has come in front of the council before, um, you know, demonstrating the growth in their numbers, the soccer association has. And, um, and personally, we visited a, a soccer tournament in Detroit Lakes this summer, uh, with a building similar to what we propose. And, um, there were teams there from Fargo, Alexandria, Walker, Detroit Lakes, Fergus Falls, and, um, a couple others that escape me at the moment, but, I mean, there were, the place was packed from Friday afternoon through Saturday night, and it would have gone longer if there would have been lights there. So, um, uh, you know, I mean, just restaurants were busy, stores, gas stations were, were busy. It was, it was quite the sight to see. So, um, soccer is a, a rapidly growing, um, segment of, of athletes in the area. Um, and then, uh, a building such as this would, uh, would definitely improve, um, the complex's marketability for, uh, for tournaments. Uh, and the soccer association has said that they've, um, they've spoken with, uh, associations in, in Fargo, Alexandria, Brainerd, and the like, and they, and the consensus is that they feel that Fergus would be a great, uh, central geographic location to host, um, to host these tournaments. Fargo wants to come and play here, but, uh, we don't currently have the, the facilities to support that. So, we could draw some significant numbers of visitors, um, with some upgrades to the facility. So, uh, also, we would construct this particular building, uh, with, uh, with the intention of possibly using it for seasonal city storage, uh, which would, uh, take care of, um, another, another need, uh, out there. We could store picnic tables and equipment and the like in that building at the same time. So, uh, yep, so coupled with the excellent soccer fields that we currently own, ours would become the premier soccer complex in the area and the region. Uh, that building would cost, we're, we're thinking about $200,000 with, uh, the added space for some possible city storage. Lighting upgrades would be a big deal for the athletic fields because, um, it would allow, uh, the softball fields do currently have, um, some lighting. Uh, but, but lighting upgrades to the baseball fields and, um, the soccer fields, which are currently unlit, would just make it that much more marketable for, um, more teams to come, because we could play, later on into the evening, uh, you know, with, with lit fields. So when I, and I mentioned that to the soccer association, and their, their eyes, you know, no pun intended, you know, kind of lit up, you know, thinking about the, uh, the, the possibilities of what lighting would do at soccer fields, so, um, you're welcome for that one. And, um, so I will, uh, I will then, yeah, just read my little, uh, speech that I prepared here, um, because it really sounds better when I read it. Uh, "One of the most attractive aspects about the D Lagoon project is the number and type of stakeholders that will have a vested interest in the success of the ballot question. As far as the voting population, since the project benefits the softball, baseball, and soccer communities, we would anticipate that the athletes and their supporters would all have, uh, a vested interest in seeing this project succeed. So we feel that because sports fans tend to be a passionate bunch, these folks would be willing to put in time and effort for a vote yes campaign. Due to the large and growing size of this population, coordination with and between each of these groups would ensure widespread support with minimal effort. Additionally, these sports programs already draw athletes from a large surrounding area. This project would help to increase those numbers. There's also been a request from the local disc golf community to add nine holes, which would allow them to host, uh, more slash larger tournaments to be hosted here. Uh, the project would also benefit the community as a whole by bringing visitors to Fergus Falls, which would contribute to our tax base and get people spending their dollars locally. The campground in its proximity to the Central Lakes Trail would also draw visitors and help to increase our prominence statewide as a recreation destination. Once people come to town for a tournament, or a campout, or both, our facility will stick in their minds as a place which to return." So, the, uh, the total project cost that we're estimating is around 3.685 million. Uh, but that does not include the necessary infrastructure, uh, improvements to run water and sewer from the northwest corner of, of the lake, where, uh, where is the closest spot we would plan to run it. Through the soccer field to hit the new building, uh, and then over to the campground with, um, uh, a spur to hit the new building at the softball complex as well. So, group, did I miss anything?
Covered it. What was that number?
Uh, total would be 3.7 million.
Right, right, but the, for the.
Infrastructure?
I think it's about 300,000.
So not a deal breaker.
A little bit likely more, with the extensions that they want throughout, probably six, it'd be about 600,000. Because if the inflation from that years in the master plan was done.
And we've looked in the map, they might want to hit some more of these other concessions, too, so it'd have to be looked at a little bit more.
Sure.
So total, I suppose, to be a little over four, 4.2?
Okay.
No question.
I was just going to mention the, the lights, and when, when we got the numbers back, I both fell on my chair. 800,000 of that million is for the softball and baseball fields, like Councilmember Rufe mentioned, and, um, my understanding, Guy, maybe you can help, help pull the lights that are there currently. Because there are some lights, but we've heard a lot of comments from folks that use them, that they can get upgraded.
Yeah, they're all, the main horseshoe complex, the four fields, they're original, so I'm not sure what that is. Mid seventies? Legion Field, of course, they're newer. They're all, uh, the main complex, they're obsolete, actually, those light heads, we can't even get anywhere.
Oh, really? Is there something, you know, obviously with the efficiency of new lighting, is there like rebate programs that you can get into?
Checking into that.
Because I would think, you know, you, it might be a million that you got to pay, but I'm guessing.
There should be some rebates and stuff on that.
Yeah, rebates on sports field lighting are pretty limited, because the lights aren't even on that much throughout the year.
No, this is true. Question on the lighting on, on the two baseball fields, would they use the structures that are there and just replace the lights, right?
Yes.
Okay.
They, yep, they have the structures that they need over at the baseball field.
Yep.
We would just upgrade the lights, and then, of course, there'd be, um, ongoing efficiency savings from the LED lights that we would install versus, um, older technology, so.
At the one baseball field, the one that had been a softball field?
Yep.
Those light poles would actually have to be changed out.
Okay.
They're too short for baseball.
Yes.
Sure. Any other questions of the D Lagoon?
Jean had one, yeah.
Well, I just, I mean, these are all great things to bring visitors to town, so thanks for that, Tom. I would just encourage that committee to, um, add the cost for the disc golf, because that's not in your numbers. Question on the soccer fields themselves, are they ADA compliant and accessible, with them being so high on a hill? It's just a question, because I've heard that before, that they're not. And so that would be a deterrent. I've heard that before as a deterrent to bringing tournaments here. Because our fields are not accessible, so I'd ask you to look into that. And then, your campground outline is, is really brief. I would be sure you would have included a dump station, power hookups, shower house, and, um, drinking water access, so if that's all included, then.
Yeah, it is all included in the master plan.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks, Jean. Justin?
And that's maybe a point of clarification for all the projects, but specifically for the, for the aquatics. I mean, the price tag is 7.1, but obviously it was discussed a, a long time ago that, that we'd be looking at fundraising for some of the dollars, you know, like we had talked 2 million. In, in terms of the discussion today, this is roughly, you know, 20-ish million. Is that for each of these user groups to try and to get pledges and fundraising, or is this? I guess I just wanted to be known that for our total project, that's, that's all in, but we'd be looking to fundraise a portion of that.
Sure. I mean, and I'd happy to hear other thoughts, too, but I think that, uh, that's part of the discussion we have to figure out, right? Because we've got, probably not going to go to the boat with the 20 million dollars worth of project. So, to figure out, how do we pare that down? Do we expect some fundraising? But I think the purpose of today's meeting is just to get those, you know, get the, going to check in with the groups, so everyone knows where they're at. Give ourselves a chance to kind of digest some of these, uh, projects, ask each other questions, ask staff questions, and then sometime between now and December, we'll have to have those conversations and, um, start to have a meeting to figure out exactly what we're taking in the legislature in January, February. Does that sound, or make sense to everybody?
I guess, one thing on that, I, I don't, we don't know what the legislature is going to do. So, I think this is why we've come with a lot of different projects, because I don't think we're expecting to have all five of these go through, if we would have all five of them go in.
Right.
So, and, and, and we don't know what they're going to do, because this is a whole new ballgame this year.
And there's a difference.
We don't know what they're going to expect.
Right.
Of, of us, or, or, or any of that, so it's, uh.
Yeah.
And there's a difference between an aquatic center and a fire station. I don't expect you to go out and get pledges for a fire station, but some of the other amenity type things, I think. You know, so some of these wouldn't really probably require.
Right.
Can raise money for the streets?
Yeah. But a couple of these, like, you know, the D Lagoon rally and Aquatic Center and I suppose you can maybe argue trails one way or another, but, you know, there's probably a couple that are, they don't fit in the same box as far as how you pay for them, but.
So I guess, and, Andrew, if you had any thoughts on that, but I guess, get the information there today. We don't, we're not making any decisions today, but we are, getting the information to everyone, and then I would think that we'll schedule another work session sometime between now and the end of the year to then kind of focus this in. Get something that people feel comfortable with, to really get the details around it.
And I think it's good that the whole council hears what the other groups are doing. Because we don't know, we were in our little groups working on our stuff, so it's good to hear what, what the others are doing.
I agree.
You know, I, you guys both kind of made good points, one being that 20 million is too much, and the other being, you know, we don't know, and what other people are saying. What's the general consensus on that? Are we, are we too high? Do we need the groups to go and scale back, or do we just, we just define the project and we can see what happens? I guess, I want to know what the council's at on that.
There are some of these projects that don't, like, that's the total high number. So, to a certain degree, like, you look at D Lagoon, you could, looks like you could maybe pick and choose some of the things, and that would be scaled down. Is that correct? I mean, you know what I'm saying, Tom. I mean, I'm all for lights on a soccer field, trust me.
Yeah, yeah.
I just think, sorry, go ahead.
Scott, did you have a?
Well, as Jim said, we don't know what the legislature is going to do. It may be that they would like to see this list in a prioritized structure, so that they can, you know, just lop a number off and take the ones above that number and say, you got your most important things, and then they don't have to think about it very much. Or, they could say, we're going to give you part of each of these things. And so, you know, a $7 million project gets two, and a $2 million project gets half a million, or something like that, and they could just whittle them, you know, say, we'll give you so much toward each of these things, but then none of them get fully funded, and then we're struggling to do something with what we get, so. I'm not sure how to ask the question, but would there be a way to find out whether it's necessary to prioritize this list or not, or do we just, it's all or nothing?
Well, my, your honor, my intention is, uh, after today, was to touch base with not only the League of Minnesota Cities, who's trying to get these same questions answered as we speak, because there's as much uncertainty there as, as there is in any community, but also just talking to, I, I kind of planted the seed with our own lobbyist about, you know, we need to talk about how to approach this, only see where things are at first. Then probably working through him to start asking the chair of these communities some of those questions, how are they going to approach these things? Because, um, the, the new statute language is very clear that they're single-issue things that need to be voted on. So I'm still a little bit nervous about, you know, streets and infrastructure, here's four different projects under that umbrella, kind of thing. So, I think we need to get the clarity on that, to really see how they're going to interpret that statute language. And, and also akin to what you just said, how are they going to, are they going to divvy out a certain amount of money? Or are they going to say, here, you have the authorization to go ask your local voters if they want to fund this project? Or are they going to say, pick one out of five? As you said, it's all uncertainty at this point, but I think we can start to have the conversation with some of the chairs that would be appropriate if we know kind of the direction that we're going. I think this is becoming more clear, at least to me, that council still has five projects that they want to likely advance into legislative session. I was half-thinking maybe one or two of them would get an X today, but I didn't have any reason to think that, other than.
Which one?
So, yes, we need to get more clarity on that, and I think knowing that, I think I, what I'm hearing is that these five are all important, and I want to keep going. Correct me if I'm wrong, but now we can bring that forward, and start having these relevant conversations. I think it's lobbyists and legislators that are going to be the ones actually interpreting that statute language and crafting these bills.
Does that make sense to everyone? I mean, we're not, obviously, at anywhere near a final, but we got the general direction, and we'll get these questions answered from the people in St. Paul, and kind of let council and staff know that, and then get back together at some point and kind of keep whittling this down. Yeah, Jim?
Do you think the chairs really know what they're going to do yet? I mean, you know.
I'm not going to say it on record.
I mean, it, it, it's all new.
It is all new.
You know, and, uh, to me, the, the chair is going to be big in it, but you're going to have other people on there that are going to, maybe not go along with what the chair wants, and I, I, you know how, how things have been with our legislature. One party against the other, who knows what they're going to do with that, that's, uh. No compromise anymore. It's my way or the highway, and, and it, it's, it's, it's getting a little old.
Yes, and, and, your honor, members, if, you know, I think both chairs will have different answers. That is, that's about as far as I'll stick my neck out on that.
Yep.
And so, um, we're just going to have to work through that process. And, um, these decisions that we made under this bill, like everything else, in, in short order, um, if we do our homework and we, we do a good job of explaining these projects to the state and the local voters, uh, we could be fine with it all said and done. You know, I just, I don't know if, maybe we didn't make this clear enough, but just for the people watching, you know, we're talking about the sales tax proposals for all these projects. And then the intention would be that the sales tax would fully fund these projects. And the legislature, the changes they made are related to regional significant projects, that's one of the big thresholds. In fact, when we submit these budgets to the state, we actually have to show, um, what portion of the project cost would be a benefit to people that don't live within the city. So we are going to have to, to show what the regional significance is, and what we feel the use of these assets are for people that aren't in town, because we are collecting tax dollars to fund these projects for people who don't necessarily live in town. And that's, that's both the beauty and maybe the curse of the sales tax. I, I personally like it because, um, you know, people that are using these amenities can help to, to pay for them as well, but, and so it doesn't strictly fall on our local taxpayers within the community. But, um, just something to keep in mind, too, that when I was talking about the sales tax, the sales tax that we currently have is dedicated to the library, and we'll pay off the library before, um, it can do anything else. So it's not like we're going to triple the amount of sales tax that we collect. It's the same half-sent obption sales tax that's being collected from the library. If these projects made it through the legislature and then made it through the local voters, then that sales tax would be extended after the library is paid off to continue to collect funds to pay for these projects. Depending on the dollar amount of these projects that are ultimately approved, assuming that some are, um, that would dictate the length of the years on the sales tax. So it's not like we're going to be adding, you know, taxes on top of the ones we're already paying, it just simply would be an extension of that half-sent sales tax beyond paying for the library bonds. I think, I think, you know, being able to provide as much information as possible now until the time that we have of vote, if that's the way this goes, it's going to be important, because obviously, we all have sticker shop over here, these numbers, and, and obviously, there's many things to huddle with the sticker I got as well, so just wanted to bring that.
Any other thoughts, questions, comments? Alright, thanks, everyone. We'll be adjourned.